This is it.
I don't know if you can hear me, Christian, but I put you on the agenda today.
Hey Jim, I can hear you loud and clear.
I mean, happy birthday to this.
Joe, that's. Did you have a copy of this? So this is a backup.
Whatever it says on the front of there is what it is.
It's for the red.
Okay, and then there's another one that's the addendum, the other one. That's. One phase, one A, that they're saying.
So I think the fourth packet before we got the agenda, so nothing's in order related to the agenda. I just copied everything from that, so.
What do you mean, setting sun on this side? I whispered. So, real quick here, right before I get started, I went to one of these data center meetings last week, or a couple of days ago. And I got some other information, and I was just wondering, is anybody interested in some of that? I'd make a couple of copies.
Did you see, did you see that poll there request?
Yeah, they did.
We have our house.
There was about three hundred people in the room, and I don't think three people were for. The guy doing the presentation was in the room too, so, you know, there was maybe one person that really liked it. It's kind of in the notes here, if we can get it through to the. At one point, they had questions you fill out a card and then they would answer, but they wouldn't interact with the people. But one of the questions that was there for the Board of Commissioners was, can we have this on a coming live vote first before that happens? And. Jeff Seating was running the meeting, and he said he thought that all of the Board of Commissioners would be in agreement that it would not pass in the county without a vote of the people. So when that was said, there was a big cheer, and about a third of the people left, so that was really the end of the presentation. Right.
Right. I thought the news said that the guy got threatened and stuff.
I've seen how much. Have you ever seen, you know, give the water container nicely, how it'll be okay?
I didn't know who did that, I think it might be Mark, whoever brought the paper was over here.
One of these, okay. Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and call them to order. And everybody would rise and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you again for another night for us to gather together, to meet, to do the business of the township. God, we just ask for your wisdom, your divine intervention, your help. We trust and rely on you to guide us as we strive to do our best to guide this community in Jesus' name, amen?
Thanks, everybody, for making the effort to mount tonight. Try not to keep you here too long. You know, two bad things.
Michelle Jackson.
Yeah.
Christine Johnson here, I'm with you. Bob Underhill, David Cost, everybody say.
Okay, is there any conflicts of interest? Does anyone, Michelle, anything?
Yeah.
No? I, myself, neither. Just kind of on a side note, I saw on the MTA newsletter, I think that someone was looking for a good policy on. Conflicts of interest, so maybe something we need, what exactly is that when we say it all the time? So just something to think of. Okay. We have an agenda here, I hope everybody's taking a look at it, I have one addition. And that is the Underhill. Road project is all wrapped up and everything, but there was a promise in the agreement to restore Mr. Underhill's property. After the easement was no longer listed needed. He submitted a cost. And I'm going to add that into new business number D. All right, with that, I'm moving on approval for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Follows in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving right along, public comment. Anybody have anything they'd love to share with us before we get started? Go in.
We have three events coming up, the thirtieth, we have a carol singing, Light of Rapid City down here at the Gimped Garden. And the seventh of December, we have our kids' Christmas over at Heritage Park that we have every year, and that's from one to three. And then we have our pancakes with Santa on the thirteenth, Saturday the thirteenth, we just hope when everybody shows up. That's going to be from nine to four.
Okay, that's amazing. Okay, any other public comments, someone would like to share anything, any board members?
I do, and it might be more of a question than a public comment, but it's in reference to this, this board and the short-term rental discussions that have been ongoing now for. Quite some time, I know the board is aware that the planning commission has been working on. Policing ordinance and presented it to the board, but. I have an observation that this board has never actually asked. For a suggested policing ordinance or any ordinance work or. Vacation rentals, the request was passed down by a previous board and not this particular body, and I haven't heard in. Any of the board discussions whether or not the board feels. Such a thing even needs to be reviewed or should be reviewed. It's just kind of being sent to you, and it's almost as if there's an obligation to. Move forward on a review of it, which could have. Multiple circumstances and legal liabilities for the township and conflicts with. Different members of the community, and it's going to turn into an absolute ball of fun and share, and I've never heard this board ask for that. I just wonder if it's going to be discussed if this board has even decided to move forward with the review, or they're just going to do it.
Okay, I think maybe we'll get to that at some point, I'm not going to answer it right now because you know, publicly, but. They know, do we know, did anybody else public comment before we move on?
Yeah.
Right?
Or the ordinance?
Yeah, again, this is public, so I'm not really supposed to respond, but I'll just say this, our intentions were to send it down to the lawyer after we have a public hearing to see. You know, the planning commission has had several public hearings throughout this process, that the board is the actual people and. Lucky us, we get to decide whether or not we're going to. You know, and use it or adopt it, but. I think it's required of this board to have a public hearing before we approve it, but before we have that public hearing, we want to send it to the legal team because there's been a lot of, you know. Different. Amendments to it, and it has been changed quite considerably since the last time it went to our legal team, so. As far as us approving it, we would not do that before it went to a legal team, and again, at our public hearing, we will feel out. The public and determine, you know, is this what we want to do moving forward? Or or not, and I agree with you, it is a can of worms, and it's been that way since it started. And, you know, when we do pass it, or if we don't pass it, I feel there will be challenges in legal, you know, settings, so. To say at this point, if we are wanting it, I don't think we can say that yet until we've had a chance to hear what the public has to say as a board.
Right, and that is my point, is actually a couple steps back, it was a previous board that requested it, but not this body, and I.
I was on the planning commission the first time when it was put together, and then Tom Backers decided that it didn't have enough teeth, the first version that we. Came up with, and it was sent back to the planning commission because of that, so.
Actually, I think it was over keys that had been passed, and I.
Yeah. 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 All right. No more public comment?
Yeah, I was reviewing this agenda, and the Parks and Rec committee requested a few items. Be discussed by you guys, and is that going to be done, or?
Yeah, it's in your report, I think there was a letter asking for specific things.
Yeah, I think there was a few things that were pointed out, but I just couldn't see anything in the.
It's in the Parks and Rec portion, I think?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda on the phone.
Yeah, I consider it part of the Parks and Rec report, so that's why I probably didn't put something, maintenance of things and.
Well, we would like to get your opinion, we did a town hall meeting in January, in January.
Okay, good, that's actually on the agenda, a whole series of those.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the.
Yep, it's number twelve C. All right, well. Move on to guest reports, if there's no other public comment, and we don't have a sheriff's deputy here with us, he did. Or at least the sheriff's department submitted a report. And it's in our thing, so everybody can see what you've had. All right, so. We'll just accept the written report from the deputy and move on to Truman, do you have anything you'd like to share with us on? Board of Commissioner events, happenings, natural, or. And then to do with that.
No, no, I'm saying Board of Commissioners.
Of course, I left all my stuff in the house, but. The commissioner went very good, very good, but fifteen hours. As you work hard, you're balanced. And plan. We're dancing, that'll be that all, but. The same thing. And he said, we saw my earphone, Dan. It's not about the number of them. Made a presentation in the week. And basically, there's four hundred people in that township. They have a face.
Four hundred and eleven.
Hoping to, you know, buy. Help pay. And usually, you don't, tomorrow, I don't know, without. The last thing was from New Haven yesterday afternoon. Which is idea for any data center. They first decided to water back in March, saying you're right. At that time, it was a good deal because that's when there's the land, there are new people. Since then, it's gone south. Always. They had a million down in Oregon when they kind of. But most of those people showed up last night, we had a hundred eighteen people jamming. And most of them had a low men, negative approach to it. And as you know, as you're meeting yesterday, there's no. We've really made it up for me, so.
Yep.
Well, that has to be worked out, but it's something we can, not be involved. That's all I know, she brought her stuff, you know, the name, Tommy and all his stuff.
Rockbocker.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we might prove the proposal.
I'm sorry?
They withdrew the proposal for the days.
That's what I'm hearing, yeah, I did not hear that officially, but I'm hearing it throughout. Is it, okay, well, I've been busy today. All right, did you have anything else, Truman? No, all right. Well. Then we received a request from a. Individual who is involved in the construction and setup of different cell phone towers around the country. And he's proposed something for Clearwater Township, he's on the Zoom line, and I'm going to give him a few minutes, he has to be. Kind of heard that, so I'm just going to let Christian share your little presentation, and that, I do have a. A picture on a thumb drive that I can put up on the TV, so people will know where you're talking about.
Absolutely, thank you, Jim and the board, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome, my name's Christian Bennett, I'm with Telecad Wireless Engineering, and Logan Phillips is online here as well tonight. And we are working with a tower company who is interested in building a tower inside the Clearwater Township. We are trying to best follow your zoning ordinance, and we saw that the zoning ordinance says something about. You know, township-owned property first, and so we found Fire Station Five. I've talked to Chief Derek and Jim one time, and kind of given them kind of the rundown on the process of the tower and what the. You know, it fully means, and that's when Jim invited me to speak here tonight with you guys. And so if you'd like, I can just go over kind of, well, you know, what we kind of need for a tower, and then if, you know, open the floor to any questions you guys have. And so the, sorry?
Sounds good.
Awesome, so the service engineers at Verizon Wireless are, have kind of given us a strict location to look in, and that's about where the fire department falls into. And they're looking to lease a one hundred by one hundred foot plot of land, that's just under a quarter acre. To build their tower and compound, they would also need an access road from the right of way all the way to the compound. And I believe that photo that you're showing is that site sketch I sent you, Jim. And that's like coming off, right off the road, through the parking lot, up into the field. And with that, they would, the tower and all the equipment would be inside that, when I was speaking with Jim, he mentioned something about guide wires. This specific tower would not have those, so everything would be inside the physical compound itself, this would be a self-support. Or a lattice tower is what it's called, so it kind of looks like a pyramid build. They're looking to build a hundred and ninety-nine foot tower, and that would be just under the FAA line, where it wouldn't have to be lit. So there wouldn't be any like blinking red lights unless they specifically request it, you know, required it. We also. That's, that's kind of what they initially need, I don't know, Jim, if you want to. Fully jump into like the financial, you know, everything about that, or if you want to.
Well, maybe just a quick synopsis, just.
Yeah, absolutely, so the lease term would be, they're looking for about a fifty to ninety-nine year lease deal. And they can do two different options, where it can be a lump sum, one-time payment, or a, you know, very low, a low monthly payment. Throughout the lease, so that, throughout the term of the lease.
I do have a question about that.
Uh, yes, sir.
And that is, in some areas and locations where towers have been installed. Individuals have been able to get free internet service, and I'm just wondering if that is, you know, something that could be considered there? You know, we obviously have a. A bill there, so eliminating a bill would be like gaining money, but it wouldn't necessarily. You know, be too much of a problem for you, I imagine, to give one person internet service.
Absolutely, so this tower technically, the lease would, the deal would technically be with Hip Hill, they're a tower company, so they actually physically build the towers. And they do not have any cell equipment, that's, you know, your big three carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile. They're the ones that actually like rent spaces on top of the tower and put, to put their antennas. So I don't know if they, but I do know that they're open to kind of the same line where you're going, is, I know they would be kind of open to outside of the market rad heights. Opening it up to nine, you know, E nine one one equipment, I know that's the fire department, so if they have like an antenna or something they want to put on the tower at a lower height. I know they could be very open to that for free.
Okay. I'll open up for questions in the room, if they have anything they would like to ask Christian. Anything concerns you.
Why did you say one ninety-nine and up to one hundred, what's that guy on?
Yeah, two hundred feet and up is the FAA guideline, where it has to be lit, so it has to have a red, you know, blinking light at the top and about midway through the tower. And we want to try to avoid that. Get as high as possible. If it's one ninety-nine, we don't have to have the red lights on it, unless the FAA specifically required it for this location.
How come we require?
Well, I'm sorry, what was that?
The question was if we could require.
Actually, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that is something that can be required or not by the township.
They carry well, yep.
All right. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Is this a, like a Fauci tower, or is it, I don't know, what's the benefit of having this, like? Five G better service?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, it would just provide better service for all the carriers in the area to get on one central tower in like the township. You know, right in the city center, to really help improve coverage and, you know, emergency response cell service.
Would the, would the neighbors around that tower? So you point on that, in, under the tower, so to speak?
I would think most assuredly, they would want to have a voice, so. For sure, it would have to be, and again, this is a village residential, so we would have to look into the, you know. Options on that, I'm sure that's not used by rights, probably a special use permit if anything, no?
Egg and wreck.
Egg and wreck is where that would go.
Last day in the chain.
Is what it currently is.
I have a question, Dave, are. Directly here in Rapid City is sort of a low-lying area in comparison to the topography directly around us, there's so many hills and high ridges. Of, you know, open land that might be leased, why build a tower in a low-lying area with all those other. Higher opportunities around us, what is the advantage of putting it here?
Uh, yes, sir, yeah, the, kind of how like the heat maps work, when you like look at like a. The cell waves go out further and further, so if you kind of get outside, you know, point two miles can really alter. A cell, deciding if you can get a phone call out or not, you know, it can be much smaller distance, so getting it in this area can really help the. The school, the homes nearby, the city hall area, really driven focus to give them perfect coverage. But if we get out to those ridges, you know, at a higher point, it could, you know, help it, but then like there'd be some drop off, it, you know, depending which way we went, the opposite direction.
Okay, well, obviously, we're not going to make a decision or anything here tonight, but.
We're the only other purpose for that.
Christian, a question is, were there any other areas considered prior to this one?
You know, there was a couple, we're trying to do our best by, you know, look at your zoning ordinance and, you know, follow those rules best we can, and it does say something along the lines of, you know, reach out to township-owned properties first, pursue those options. And so we're, you know, we wanted to do that and give you guys, and the fire department did fall in our search area.
This brought to your attention of Fauci.
Yes, yes. What was Derek's opinion, just curious if he had one, or if you?
Yeah, he, you know, this is kind of paraphrasing, because it was about two weeks ago we spoke, but he made it clear that it's not his decision, but he's not opposed to it. I think if I remember correctly, he mentioned he didn't want it directly on the edge of the grass near the parking lot, because sometimes they take wide turns and they need that extra room. And so that's kind of why I pushed it more in the middle of the, the green space, but. He did not, he was not opposed to it, but also he made it clear that he doesn't own the property, so it was, you know.
He's a good man.
He is.
Well, here's your experience.
Okay, Dave.
Oh, just sort of know, I have a lot of experience with dealing with these several towers and getting things going. There will be dealing with Traverse City, that was my idea, they're about one point seven million dollars, two million dollars raised. There's all different variables, which we'll get into if we even look at this, I have a list of carriers, AT&amp;T. The top of the line, and I already talked about possibly out there at Patriot Park. And even aiding with his vendors, seeing that was possible, under the top shelf. And, well, there's many options to look at here. There's a lot of money involved, a lot of money.
I have a legal opinion that the. Board back in the early two thousands had when they were thinking about putting a tower up there, and it was not going to prove use according to the Dean, our language of the initial. Giving us a property, if we were to put one there, the money would all go to the state of Michigan, is what we were told. In the brief, so.
I see, so is that mine, who pays for that tower that's there?
The one that's there is a backup tower for the sheriff's department, that they kind of. Mothballed when they went to the eight hundred megahertz radio system. That they're now.
So that's not existent?
It's not being used, it's strictly for backup right now. But they did say we could use the power up there at some point.
No, we're good, that would be great.
Yep. I've got him online here, but, you know, is there a question there, or?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, Christian, I. Okay. All right, Christian, um, I I appreciate your thing. I think we'll be in touch probably, uh, again. Obviously can't approve anything about that this evening or anything, but kind of give some people. Thought to to think on and that. I'm gonna like. Someone mentioned earlier, uh, into the actual zoning of it. And, uh. You know, that. Whole process there and, uh. I'll probably be get back in touch with you soon.
Awesome. I I want to say thank you and, uh, thank you guys for all of your time. And if you have any more questions at all, I mean. Jimmy, you have all my contact info, but also just let me know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate. Okay. Might as well go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. Of October, excuse me. Yes, October sixteenth. So I don't know if anybody noticed or not, but, uh. We haven't been exactly the most timely and, um. Posting our minutes in that, but our last. Meeting, we had the minutes out in two days and they made it in the following week, Thursday paper, so. But I'm trying to make a little effort to. Yeah, we'll be a little more timed with that, but. Thank you for your patience. I'll go ahead and make a motion that the we approve these minutes. On October sixteenth, resident. Was there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, fellows in favor? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the October thirtieth special meeting minutes. Got a little follow-up to do on some of these. I think this is an accurate representation of our meeting and now I'm going to include the October thirty special meeting minutes. All those in favor?
It's on everybody's eye.
Dave said I am. Okay, that motion carried. It brings us to the treasurer's report.
And I'm waiting based on the table of anybody wanted copies of the treasurer's report, which has the balances in the bank. And we are still working, um, with the BSNAs. As well as our home team on some of the subaccounts, the general ledgers are still not, um. Accurate in our system to be able to break down, um, the committed funds, all that are rich. Capital improvement funds in that trouble. So, uh, but that being said, if anybody's lying, you have to have another one saying what's in the balance. Um, here's a.
You're not seeing the public information.
Isn't that one of them that they combined?
Well, that's a subaccount at the general.
The only reason why I have a good privilege on others is because it does have Michigan as. There's no balance for the bank.
Do you have any questions?
These balances match with what the bank balances?
So I mean, everything's been functioning where the banks are certainly, but. Money's already.
Our funds are.
Yeah, everything with the general ledgers are inaccurate. So we're having, um. D has been working with the S and A, the duty to try to get those sorted away as well as with.
So these are the bank balances, not the actual BSNA balances?
Correct. The BSNA balances are wrong. And they're the general ledgers are wrong.
It sure takes some while to straighten that stuff out. Literally hours on.
Given the. Proper information, they're throwing it out?
No, the information that was was not accurate. So they are trying to, um. They are trying to scrub. The the information and alarming are some general ledger counts with the state. So for us, I think the unfortunate part was that. BSNA was not flexible. So we had planned a Miranda approval after. A contribution for BSNA where I think it would have the home team before BSNA was implemented. We probably did not be running towards the issues that that would have been into.
Are you discovering there ever? It's still in our hands, so.
Yeah.
We're working every day with it right now.
Yes. Right now, because, um, we're working with Miranda, the state is going to reimburse us those funds that Miranda is being paid. To scrub those, um, general ledger accounts. So once we get to that point where they're fat. Then we are on our side are going to be, um. We have everything that we've taken in all in the system. So as soon as those ledgers are accurate, we will post them and then we are going to attempt on our end. To do the reconciliation, so our side rather than paying for them to do it. If we run into, um, any kind of red flags or issues, then we would have them do the reconciliation for August. So everything proceeding that would be correct. So they did provide us, uh, well, that was a backup and again. It would go to the state for approval that we would be able to. Have the state reimburse us for any monies for them to do the reconciliation. And it's not really. Anybody made a mistake on our end. It's just we didn't have fund accounting. You know, system we had with the folks, so, um. With the funding, everything kind of, um, everything that you do touches another piece of that puzzle. Um, with quick books, you know, where one person's entering information, the other person's entering information, we're balancing. We each other on that, that it isn't going to be true, um, bond accounting, so. It's it has been growing pains and it's probably going to be a little bit more of a pain, but I would imagine by this, um. Spring, hopefully that we have everything.
Oh, God, I hope it lasts longer.
What's that?
I hope before spring.
I'm thinking March. By March, we should have everything's. Did you have any input that you wanted on? Because you've been wanting more stuff with the S and A. Do you have any input?
Well, we got, because I spent all day Wednesday. It was supposed to be a training day for reconciliation and. Um, I said, well, let's do the tax fund because the tax fund can be all set because I, that's my baby. So we go in and sure enough, we can even do the tax fund. So July was, uh. Completely wrong because they, we went to the cloud and tax in July. Then we went to the cloud in finances in August and they didn't merge the two together. So it's all messed up. And so we couldn't do the tax. And the only one we could reconcile up to date is the no fund. So that's all up to date. Um, all the other ones, the balances are wacky and we're gonna have to do some. The the beginning statements, the July statements are gonna have to be forced reconciled at this point by plant Miranda or BSNA. We're not sure which yet, but.
They have my July reconciliations.
Yeah, but they, it's BSNA is not the numbers they brought in and stuff. They're equating the. Yeah, um, they have all the state statements they need and. I just asked them that they don't do anything without meeting it on the phone because last time they did some fun stuff and. It's not really how we had it set up. So, um, yeah, they really need to have. A board member or myself on the phone, but now we're not supposed to go, so. Fingers crossed. Um, it's not, it's totally not us. I've been, every time I talk to somebody. You know, we started out, we started out a little rocky with Abraham in the beginning, the trainer on on Wednesday, and he was kind of like, oh, you know, because I was explaining things. He's like, oh, whatever. And then by about, oh, the first reconciliation halfway through, he's like, oh.
He was very sympathetic.
He's like, I get what you're saying. And yes, you need to write another email. And I did, I belonged to him. With frustration, we may get some training data back because I'm I'm getting a little bit feisty, get a little spicier now. So we'll see.
So it's progress.
You have some KCI documents?
Yes, I do. Well, I need, um, to, I have a couple of documents. The first one, you go to the KCI document and, um. This is for the, um, school. Collecting taxes.
If you had.
Um, I'm sorry, this is Calcasid Public School in North Casey. So this one here for collecting taxes for them. I need to get, um, approval and I need a supervisor signature and the. Signature. So the collection fee for twenty twenty-six is proposed at three dollars and ninety-four cents per proposal. This includes the cost of collecting and request to education services, summer tax, so let me. Should post the fees in these townships will be reimbursed for them.
This would be El practice schools for the.
Um, this is Calcasid Schools.
El practice is massive.
So I can pass that down.
I will say, I think we're the higher, uh, we're on the higher end of that fee, but Calcasid, I mean, and I know that there's going to be a ton of checks that are like, you're one, you're charging one. So.
It was suggested.
Yeah.
The what are we getting?
I think it's the same. I think I speak at three ninety-four. So the. It's around nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. So the only difference would be if those were to go up, that they would bring us for that.
Why would postage be?
I'd say rather than do it, but.
No, I mean, why postage for that? I thought it was just an admin fee for us to. I don't know why they would pay.
We're putting the stamps on the stuff, so. We gotta get reimbursed for that. If postage goes up, the cost is more.
It's all covered under the admin for collecting the regular taxes anyways. I don't understand why what postage has to a Calcasid.
Well, we we are currently participating, participating with, um, and so it's, uh, we're the income for collecting, um, that was for the school, so.
We always do.
We always do. So I just need, um, signatures to then there being some agreement from you and from Christine and. I have the stamped envelope. I will fill it out in.
That's for twenty-six, right?
Yes.
Because I revealed it this year.
Won't be the next one. Yeah, this one, this goes.
Yeah, I think we're together, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Same thing.
I'm aware of that. Yeah. So this is not the base, guys.
Well, it was mentioned that we have a KCI bill coming up. I'm not sure how much it is, but I.
I have it and I'm mailing it out, so.
Yeah, I was going to be interested in even, we come across that one year earlier. We never had to vote on the KCI stuff. I guess.
Well, we, but he did, that's what his time to do. So and we approved.
It doesn't hurt, I mean, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, so then, um. Let's do it. So we're gonna circle back to the, that's for Calcasid, but now we. So, um. BSNA for the reimbursement next week, we're supposed to have available hours, so they'll be itemized. We have the invoices and then just. Through the payment, we'll be submitting that to the state, so we'll be reimbursed the monies that we have paid out.
For plant Moran.
For plant Moran. And it's almost, I think, almost like a few thousand.
A little over a hundred.
Dollars. So. So yes, so that piece of the puzzle should be taken care of. Um, the next thing I wanted to go over is we did a newsletter. With the last tax, um, so we we do have a public interest in. Another newsletter going out with our next tax bill. So, um, I would like to propose, um, that we do that. So, um. I guess I would like everybody's input on what they thought we had a lot of positive feedback. Um, on the newsletters. People liked being informed and knowing what's going on in the community.
We've kind of put the word out over the last few days to, you know, for people to put something together, more or less.
Yes. Okay, so we're gonna be, um, sending texts about KCI will be, and what is the date that's proposed? In December.
Oh, we're beginning to have them go out?
Yes.
I have them ready. I have to go probably go to KCI beginning of this week sometime, early, middle, middle of this week. The the tax as well. And then they take maybe about a week or so, so, um, I'll need the stuff in by Wednesday of next week.
The that would be the deadline for the newsletter. So if everybody's on board for the newsletter, like to propose that we do another newsletter. With the updates and it and have it go in the, um, tax files that will be ordered.
Are you okay with your budget? You're definitely charging doing that?
Yeah.
How how much does it cost to us for those newsletters to be printed?
I think it was roughly about five hundred dollars.
Totally for the print? I don't know. It's just the paper and the print and the folding of it because. Postage is all right. I don't have, I don't know what it was last year or.
Twelve hundred and fifty cents a parcel, that's.
Fifty. Oh, okay.
It was a colored copy, so I mean, that's.
Wait, I guess that's in TRA, so. It's front and back and it was colored, it's pictured.
It was folded, he put an envelope.
And then you can go in with our tax stuff.
There are people with multiple parcels that are giving the elders newsletters.
What do you have multiple?
Uh, people don't even want them. They'd rather just look at them online at the township website. We can save a lot of money. If we do it that way, there are some people, perhaps seniors that are computer friendly, that might want a copy.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's six one, it doesn't have, or we can put them on the website, but our website's kind of. I mean, I. I I know that we got a lot of people at Whitecomb last time, and I do know that you're right, there's multiple parcels, there'll be multiple printing. But then again, even with the taxes, we get, we get. A stack that big coming back in taxes, everything of people not changing their addresses and. Yeah. I'm I'll do whatever you guys want me to do. I know.
Well, listen, yeah.
My only hesitation is the timing of it. I feel like it's a rush job. Well, I know you, you've already put the feelers out and you've talked to people and you're gathering stuff. I, I, well, whoever's. Doing that, but, um, you know, it's just now coming to the meeting and you have a few days.
Brought it to public comment last month.
Public comment, but there was no decision made. That's what I'm saying. So now we're at the meeting and you have a few days to get it done and. Get it sent. And does that give us any time to review that? Or, I mean, or is anybody looking at it besides you or? You know, that's, that's, that's just me. It's just, it's just the timing of it, like. You know, that's, that's, that's just me, it's just, it's just the timing of it, like, you know. Okay, for example, we, we got the cemetery ordinance in March, we just sent it, now we haven't even sent it to the attorney yet. We just appro- approved sending it to the attorney last month, so, I mean, we don't rush things.
But that's an ordinance.
That's an ordinance, I know, I know, that's.
What people.
It's just, it's just for example, just for a thing.
It's a way to appreciate the volunteers and appreciate what's happening, I mean, this isn't a, a legal document by any means, but. We always, we always know what's coming up, we always know what taxes are coming up.
My other hesitation on it was just um. The fact that. The S and A is so messed up and the treasurer and yourself are not able to reconcile, and you're not able to get us. Uh, balances that. Are accurate except for what the bank says, I, I mean, I just feel like. Putting your attention on a newsletter instead of on.
Well, we.
In fact, my attention was to the S and A and how, that's not the fact can be right now with the S and A.
Yes, and, and just so that you know. The information that went into the S and A. Did not come from the treasurer's quickbooks, it came from the books.
Because they took it before reconciliation.
No, they took it, we can actually view the quickbooks, make sure the G L numbers. Were correct, because we weren't having looked at the quickbooks beforehand, and a lot of it is the G L numbers that were in there, we were not allowed to look at your quickbooks before you turned over to the S and A. So a lot of the mess is like Mr. Anderson just told me last week, our previous auditor, garbage in, garbage out, he was no offense. But garbage in, garbage out, if we would have had time to go over it and look all through the quickbooks. And clean it up before we transferred over.
I don't think I already cleaned up.
No, we're talking about, he doesn't change the G L numbers, he doesn't go through, and. The, the G L numbers themselves have to be looked at and cleaned through.
He did help me do that.
He did it to an auditor to that point, he's actually not supposed to be doing a lot of it. It was the, the, the G L numbers that were in there, and, and the whole thing that was transferred over, it had previous G L number that had history. So, but the V S and A is not a problem, that. With the newsletter, that has nothing to do, that's, and apples and oranges, not the same thing.
Yes, so the.
I think my hesitation for Yama is.
So the information that is in the V S and A is exactly that, garbage in and garbage out, so there's nothing that we have done. To not be able to reconcile with the bank, the D accounts.
No.
It has to be straightened out before we can reconcile or have Plan and Moran reconcile to provide. Actual numbers, actual G L counts where things were paid out of.
So with the audit report, which has been brought up before. For the most recent audit that we had. Our auditor had combined our general funds with Metro PAG and whatever, Metro, right, that's right. All those subaccounts were combined with the general fund, that's why we're in the black, right? Because all of those combined, I found out now why, it's because, yes, we have them separated as funds, but when checks were written out of those accounts, say, we decided to pay. Something out of PAG, when it was written out of PAG, it was a one O one G L number that was used. So then the auditor looks at instead of PAG, because PAG had a different, it should have had a different number. So when the auditor looked at it, he said, oh, this is coming out of the general fund, so instead of going back and having to fix all that, he lumped it all together, and that's how the audit's been done for years. Because the G L numbers are messed up, and that's why the audit. Looks the way it is, and they're not separated as funds, and that's why the V S and A is set up the way it is, because they went off the audit. It's a mess.
It is a mess.
That, that's it, a newsletter, um. So. You don't know how much it costs. You, I mean, here's the thing.
I can't tell you.
It doesn't feel good when you come in. Or whoever's going to do the news, um. With, without knowing how much it's gonna cost. And it's last minute, we have to decide today, whether it's Wednesday. Um, I'm not in favor of it that way.
Well, this is what I want to say, Dave, is it didn't come from us, it wasn't our idea, it was people in the community that want.
That's not the point.
The newsletter, so I'm just bringing it up in my.
Yeah.
Portion of the.
That's nice, that's okay.
That doesn't mean.
It's easily, it can easily come. Yeah, I mean, it can be easily found in the quickbooks program, you don't have to see what we paid last year, I. I don't have access to that, what we paid in the summer taxes. Whatever we paid on the summer tax bill, it would be on that for.
Don't think it was.
Okay.
It's added on it.
Separate though.
Very quickly.
Same case.
Reason, I brought it up a month ago. And mentioned to the board is because. We. Have millages. And the people who were asking for people's tax money, so they can see how the money has been spent, so we contacted the, the road committee, are gonna tell. A little bit, the parts, wrote a little spiel, they all have written a spiel, either emailed to her or hand-delivered to her. So that's it, but it's important that we tell the people. How their money's being spent.
And is.
And it's only.
Are you standing against what the newsletter, why do you think the newsletter should be a bill, is that what you're saying?
I, yeah, I think it's important, I can button back every time we get it.
Well, maybe you do, but maybe, you know, there's a lot of people that do their bank, their banking paperless, and other things paperless. So what, I mean, they can see that at the township website.
I rarely look at the township website.
Okay, that's you.
But I'm not, I don't know many people, but everybody gets. Their taxes.
Yeah, yeah, and the website is a hot mess, so try calling anything.
I just think it's common courtesy.
It's like, it's an old school thing, it's done and. Makes people feel, I, you know, like I said, I'm neutral on Switzerland.
I am Switzerland as well, but I know that people in the community have asked.
I've heard both ways, I've heard. From people saying that they enjoyed receiving the newsletter, and then I have, I've talked to people that said they didn't even see the newsletter, so. Um, it's. Probably both ways there, but I, I think there's some merit to what Dave's saying, I think we are a little rushed on this, and, and maybe we should have a ball on it and move on.
It's always rushed, every year, every.
Yep.
Could an option be that? We print out a newsletter and then we have it at. The township hall.
I would think that's a brilliant idea.
That. Their, their newsletter, if they're interested in it, and.
Posted in all our margin places and.
I agree.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's a, that's a kind of nice, have it posted, people that come in to pay their taxes.
Because it's most of the people that are coming to send their taxes in the mail, bringing a check that's going.
And then the community can. The volunteers can tell people what they're doing, they can thank the people who are giving them donations. Um, funds.
Yes, all those things.
So, I think that's an option.
Very quickly, okay, because this really isn't a discussion.
Just super quick, another outside of the box method, that I don't know if it would be more cost efficient or not, but. People that don't go online may often read the newspaper, is there a lower cost to put it in a little section on the newspaper than going in some.
Newspaper is expensive.
Oh, yeah, but.
Really, we have so many things we have to post, it's ridiculous.
I know.
So that, it's like three hundred and fifty bucks to post a simple notice in there.
Yes. I'm surprised they're still business, I just want to see, you know, yeah, we're getting a lot of mileage, I mean, all different areas and.
And it sounds like we have to leave, we feel like shiny paper.
Well, another thing to.
Get off a, all the printer and have it to actually be there.
Okay, one more thing, maybe we can wrap this up, but um. Maybe there would be an email. Newsletter where we could do a monthly thing, just kind of push it out there, people.
Sign up. Along with Dave's suggestion, that's exactly what we should do.
Yeah, good.
And I also suggest that we get some type of a committee or subcommittee to actually start putting some content together for this, so it's not like. Christine says, oh, so here it is, and blah, 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 let's study what we put in, and it makes it more business.
Sounds good, all right, well.
Good, good, the technology to print these things. Is the newsletter artistic, that great?
It can be, it doesn't have to be.
And how many do you produce?
Twenty five hundred.
Yeah.
And how many times a year do you go to your printer to make the nice stuffs?
A what?
To make stuff for you.
We print our own stuff, usually.
We print, yeah, I.
But this newsletter is a little beyond.
The tax.
Yeah, I know, this, this is a nice, I don't, we have, I mean, this is a nice shiny paper, it's got pictures, it's really. Aesthetically pleasing.
So maybe we could do a myriad of things, have something that we email out, something that when people come to pay their taxes, we have there. And something that um, we can post or have online.
Yeah.
And again, which somebody suggested, if they're coming to pay their taxes and you have that there for them, those are the people that aren't gonna go online and look.
Sure.
So, you give your, you're getting a couple things done.
Is, this is going all the tax bill?
Yes.
Well, that is more than. So it's another option.
You better put it in my line.
A zero cost option is to print a Q R code and tax bill that people can link to, and take certain to. That's real technology now.
Well, no, I mean, that's easy enough to do, um, if, or, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things in that, but. Yeah, um. The thing is, is if you do it now in this tax bill, that's what I'll say about it, if you do it now in this tax bill, you have budget meetings coming up and stuff like that, that mean we want people to be here.
We don't have.
Meetings in, in the spring coming up, so. You know, maybe that's something that in the tax bills, because people tend not to, but I'm, I'm. I don't.
Don't you will keep kind of that?
Yeah. Um, we do have other requirements for posting for those upcoming meetings that you're talking about too, so.
Well, and this is definitely. Getting the, the own article. If they go there, now.
Okay, so. Just to very quickly wrap up, we're gonna look at some alternatives, maybe email newsletter, maybe just posting them and making them available. Um, and that kind of thing, at least for this one, we're gonna look into future content for the one upcoming in June, and we're gonna have a two-page newsletter in June. How's that? Okay.
Um, I wouldn't put that under the treasurer's budget, though, I would put that under the township budget, so I would make the motion that the. Board approved D to do the newsletter.
It only takes me an hour, it's not, it's really not a big deal to do it, I would that one out the last last time.
But to put it under your um, clerical. Hours instead of the treasurer.
I think we said we were gonna do that last time, and I think it just ended up like, whatever.
Okay, so am I correct, we're not gonna put one in the mail this?
No, we're going to use multimedia.
Okay.
Alternatives.
Okay. Okay, I have one other thing, and this is something that. Uh. From the treasurer's report, this is something that uh, Pat Whiteford sent me, wearing his um, county administrator hat. And it is a declaration or um. A resolution for us to pass. As a. Township. And each township, some of them have their own assessors, some of them use the county assessor, but. There is a. Overall assessor that um, I'm trying to look for the name there, designated assess, assessor for the entire county, and our assessor, Don Coons. Kind of has to report to him, and then he reports to the state, so it's kind of like just another person in the line, but anyway. The county has chosen a gentleman by the name of. Clifford Joe Porterfield. And. We have a copy of a resolution that will. Um. Agree with the. Counties um, appointment of this person, and uh, there's a bunch of whereas is that type of thing, but. It's more or less says that. Like five different laws give the authorization to have a designated assessor for the county, and because of all that. Um. They have decided to hire this guy, and it would be. For me to sign on with all the other individual townships to approve it. Uh, so if there is no objection, and then I, again, I didn't interview this person, I have no idea who he is, but this is someone that. The county has chosen to act as a designated. Um, assessor for the entire county, so. If there are no obje- objections to that, I'm gonna go ahead and sign this.
I have no objection.
Is there anybody that has any further discussion on this or questions regarding it? All right.
We got to choose ours, they should get to choose.
Yes, we, we have our own assessor. You should never have to even contact this person, I would think, this is the person that reports to the state. All right, it's done. Okay, was there anything else in the treasurer's report you want to touch on the show?
Um, no, other, other than um. Whenever we get from Plan Moran, the billable hours, we'll send with the invoices and group of payment to reimbursement. From the state, and then the only other thing that I'm watching for, and I thought they said that they emailed it to you. On our last phone conversation, and that was for their tax team. To work with the I R S for our I R S issue.
To negotiate for it, yeah.
Yes, well, they can negotiate um. Penalties and fines, I don't believe they can negotiate interests, we have to have a valid reason. And it cannot be just because. We are a different board than the board that handled that before, and then they were going to have another team come in, and that team was going to work on. The unemployment portion, which I think is going to be one that is going to be more costly to not resolve it to, rather than quickly. So um. Those were the only things that I would like to see when they come through, and I will follow up with Carolyn, because she was going to try to have them to us today.
Yep.
So we, we're going into a budget. To have it approved, you know, by this spring, we're definitely going to have to. Figure out. Um, that piece of the puzzle and how we're gonna pay if we need your budget for um. Other things that we need within the township, so um. I just like to know when that comes through, and again, I'll follow up with Carolyn. And I think that was gonna be less costly, and we were gonna also provide that to the state. For people for some reimbursement for their tax teams to work on those two items.
I want to say that Carolyn said that the state would not reimburse for the I R R stuff because it is federal.
So maybe for the state that they would be able to.
For the unemployment possibly, but the unemployment was not included in their um, proposal.
It ju- it was supposed to be a separate proposal, did you receive the proposal from them?
We got the proposal, well, it's, it's just a spoke of service for the I R R stuff.
Because that's, that's what I wanted to see, because we have to provide them a P O A for them, a limited P O A for them to be able to. Get any information from the I R S, and they have also stated.
That's what Jim said.
The auditor is not able to work with the I R S or this. With either of those tax shares, and honestly. The auditor probably should not be giving us advice of what to do with money when the I R S sends it back to us. To just deposit it and wait for a letter to come in.
Hmm.
That's crazy, they should be somehow also calling the board that advice that was given, if that was wrong. So I would like to probably get that to like.
Two to four thousand dollars for the initial uh, analysis, so they're, they have everything, and so two to four thousand dollars for them to look at it. And um, then they will come back with a proposal after that.
Okay, and I would like to call in that.
This is the original song.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, yeah.
Perfect, if I had, I split that before, that I was looking for. So those, to meet those swallows are paramount.
Yeah.
To resolve it.
Absolutely.
So that's all.
All set, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
All right. That brings us to.
Okay, you have first thing on your balance report and statement, which uh, we no longer do because um. Yeah, I don't have my own separate accounting now, so. The balance reports, treasurer, so you do have your check registered for. Fire department, um, everything there is. Under their limits, uh. And insurance, so nothing needed, and I'll go down there. Um, township stuff is all contracts, um. And uh, things that are already approved. Including the insurance and V S and.
The um, fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, that is, okay, the sphere, because it's our next portion per bat. So did anybody just gotta carry on, send me on to get off that subject, did anybody? So did anybody just gotta carry out sending on to get off that subject? Did anybody actually find out when we have Ian Walter Carter with our insurance?
For what?
You know, your submission with that gun.
He needs, um, I talked to Mr. Olson, and he said he doesn't believe so, but he's willing to look into it as soon as he can figure out what, how much things are gonna be. He said, contact him and he'll put in a thing, and we'll see where it goes. But he said even if we have something, I think it's like ten thousand.
Oh, one ten thousand.
Um, there is one check on the, uh, general fund that was voided, uh, to the state of Michigan, because that was an EFT payment, it is not a check, and when I first did it, it came out as a check, so I had to void that check, and then do it as an EFT. Just so you know, that's why they use a void check on it. Which is kinda nice that they show you.
And did we do, have to do a GBI contribution that or they?
No, no, it's automatically took care of it. And then, uh, the Parkinson Rev, the, I think the dem牠s bill. I don't know, like, this is their regular billing is always a thousand twenty when they have all of the project items out. Do we have to approve that every month, or can we just approve that?
Over twenty eighth, right? That was the day, I think.
Some, a majority of them.
So this says October sixteenth.
That would have been when that check was paid, so it would have been September bill.
Okay, so it'll be still on there in September, yeah. So it'd be normal then.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm just saying, do, do we have to approve that payment every month for the mortgages, because it's a, it's ten, it's a contract.
Yeah, I see there's another one there for the mortgages, which is some.
That would have been the new one.
Okay.
So that's happened.
Okay, that makes sense, I think, yeah. They were requesting it for them. I'm still about to pay from, they started email.
They're good, so the next bill was made on eleven seventh. And I did create, uh, a new email account for accounts payable, so in the clerk's email, I get hundreds of emails every day, stuff from everywhere comes into my email, including bills, and so several times they have gotten missed in this montage of crazy emails, so I created an accounts payable at their winner T W P dot com email just for, uh, invoicing, and I've notified everybody that sends email bills to email to that email instead of the clerk. So that should clear up some of the late payments that happened, because I never saw a bill.
And, and that's, I, I did have a question, so we do have the capability with the SNA to literally have like a small scanner when those invoices come in, that you can scan the invoices and have them go right into the system, and my understanding is that then the auditor goes to do the audit, all of the information is right there, um, is that something that you would be opposed to doing, or?
Um, not opposed to doing that, it's just another added step in paying bills, which there's already forty steps to pay the bills.
So, so now we do the paper copy and we staple it, and we put it in a file, where this way we would just be scanning it into the system.
And the auditor doesn't need to see, uh, I mean, he gets the paper invoices and he looks at things, but he doesn't need to see all of them. He, he looks for certainly things.
Okay, and then my only other question on this report is I see that we have invoice numbers, but then next to it, we have GL numbers. The GL numbers of these invoices are paid out of, do not print on this check register, we said. Is there any page in, have that?
I'm sorry? It does not, it does not fit the GL number on this report.
It gives us the option.
For the invoice. You should be able to tweet these to have.
So GL numbers, we really should get that one, what you think?
I don't know why it's missing yet, who knows why it's missing, but yeah, all that's.
Maybe it's just not selected.
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
So we should.
Yeah, my knowledge. I mean, do you need to see the GL?
We should probably have the GL numbers that.
Because you can go in and look at any one of these checks and see the GL number, because you have access to that.
Yeah, we're gonna have a paper copy that has the invoice number. We can go online and we can, in the SNA, it's like invoice number.
Yeah, you can, you can look up the.
So if I have company that has a check number or. We should have the GL number.
You guys been able to log into the SNA though?
No, they're not, no.
They don't.
They haven't, they don't get to watch.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hold on until they, and then when they, when they look at, maybe that makes sense. So I just need a motion to approve all post audit payments.
I would make that motion. Prove.
After you say, you said. Babe?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Um, just one other heads up thing, I had to do, uh, an audit for, um, workers' comp, which was a whole nother ball of fun, trying to blend audit from QuickBooks and from the SNA to try to get them the information that they're looking for. Uh, but I did get that finished today, um. They did ask for documentation for things to be uploaded, and I didn't have the opportunity to do that, so they got stuck without documentation. I sent them what I had available, but I didn't have time to pull, they don't give you the option to save your work and go back and add to it later, which I did comment on there, that you can't do that, which is not fun, because I had to leave, so I had to leave it and finish it, and it is what it is. So if they need it, I'm sure I'll hear from them, but just so you know, that was a whole nother fun thing for me to do with the conversion. And I think that was it for me.
So, um, just to follow up, and this letter E here, the IRS reporting payroll taxes?
Are you talking about where are we currently?
Yeah.
Ever since I.
Have a number that we're looking at.
Oh, no, no, because every letter we got from the IR- IRS is a different amount. It changed every time they sent a letter. They would send us a letter saying, you have a credit for this period, and then they'd send us a letter saying, you owe for this period, and then they'd send us a letter saying, you owe a different amount for this period, same period, different amounts.
And it did, I, I just found it kind of strange, because the first time I ever even saw the IRS issue was the letters they sent to, like, I was like, oh, wow, we've gotten a lot of letters.
Yeah.
And I've never seen any of the.
And they, most of them have been forwarded to Tyler, he asked me to forward them to him when, when we got them, and he made contact, but hasn't heard back. Of course, we have.
Well, he's not allowed to negotiate with the IRS.
No. Uh, he was going to discuss with them our situation.
And he would not be allowed to discuss our situation with them with that POA.
Hmm, interesting.
So am I correct, then, this Plant Moran group is?
Their tax team.
Settling those numbers, they're finding out the number that we're, if, all looking for, what we actually.
Christine ordered the documentation that she's received from the IRS. So she scanned them, they have all of that information, but they need for us to decide if we're going to have their team work on how they have.
That we just signed.
And so if we are good with that, then we will have to provide a limited power of attorney to them. So we would probably have to get that from our attorney that allows them to reach out to the Internal Revenue Service and actually find out a number.
I think.
How much do we owe?
I think the IRS actually has a release form for that, so.
They're saying they need a power of attorney to be able to work with that, because there are several forms that can be filled out so that they can discuss with, um, the IRS, um, those forms do not , um, negate to plant earlier, they have to have a limited power of attorney, so we, we should have our attorney, yeah.
Obviously, we will have to get together on that, but, um, is this for individuals? Is it for like Carolyn and Eric and that, or is it for just, just the companies, okay?
And then their tax team stated that they have a mu- a municipal group that they were going to tap to work with the state of Michigan on the unemployment taxes, because my understanding is that is that one, um, is just hanging out there, right? Have we gotten anything other than local, local letters from them?
No.
So that one, the penalties and interest could be really steep, and we would also need another team to negotiate on our behalf. Um, I think that the unemployment tax is going to be more costly to the township, the township, I guess, in one.
It's really awesome of that.
Five years, so it is, not, not very possible, probably. So it's gonna be the more costly that we are going to have to have negotiated on our behalf, but we need to know what we all, I mean, if we're doing a budget, we need to know.
We could have a hundred thousand dollar liability.
Yes, yes, we need to know that for the sauce, you know, and whatever we can submit to. Yes, and whatever we can submit to Eric, and if he goes, no, I can't, you know, approve this because it's special, we can approve that amount of dollars, whatever we can submit to them that they have money for now, and they approve is going to be less money that is gonna come out of our budget to pay to get these issues straightened out, and then moving forward, Plant Moran will set up policy and procedure, so we don't run into this again, that this is what we do.
Well, ever since I took over, we've been current on our nine forty ones every month, that's, so that's not an issue anymore. It's just the past issue, but still.
Um, the letters that I saw are recent.
Oh, yeah, they're still sending letters, but it's for that, that period, it's not for now. Yeah, I think they may have done that.
So that makes us not having our current.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're not.
Don't know for sure, yeah.
The letters that we received strictly say, will form the left, so we are gonna have to have somebody on our side that is not the auditor, working on our behalf to get these straightened out.
I heard you, I saw him and said something with the board, was, I were remember that had both on the blocks, they actually can be fined and put in jail. Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and as a board, when those things come in, we have to be transparent, like, everybody has to, what is for?
Scary stuff, I can tell you that.
It's expensive stuff, because according to the tax team, we can't go, oh, this is the prior board and now we're in a new board. That's not an excuse, that's not something that they'll negotiate, the lynch's, um, closed accounts, those kind of things, we never able to work with, but they can't, we can't just go, oh, well, this was the old board, and then now we're a new board, and they did this, they don't care. They're, they're not going to take that as an excuse to, to, um, neglect our responsibility to the IRS searches.
Okay.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll just throw that out, I do have a friend of mine in Traverse City that's super, super intelligent, and he may offer some suggestions on how to take care of this, as Michelle was just asking. He's really smart, and strange smart.
Yes.
Um, many, 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 many.
You might even have some more connections, but it covers, connect, it's just important.
Yes, and, um, yes, I, I'm dealing.
They are invited, it's just a conversation. What we, because everything, this problem already, it just pays.
So now you don't have to, right?
Yeah.
So I don't think anybody's gonna just try. What you've had, you predict.
Correct.
Which is the, I got a cost of buying.
Yeah, no, the, obviously, the, I cannot taste the process, negotiate the interest.
And we're interested in this much.
Whole way, and that's compounded day.
With your criminal activity, this is a problem for you? Yeah, I can't.
That, it was, um, not criminal, I just think that was, um, ignorance, in my opinion, and somebody just didn't know.
So, um, I think this was, I was saying that one. Um, I think, do we have to, wait, Michelle, do you think we still need to approve this addendum, because there is a.
There are a part that we need to have.
Estimated fee range for this phase is six to eight thousand dollars, this is phase one A, which is the reconciliations and conversion cleanup.
Yeah, I wanna say Eric wanted board approval so that he could send another number and of, of understanding.
Right, we want to. Oh, that's everything is. So we are not signing anything, and we're going to that, with them, because if we do a force reconciliation, we're only having them do justice.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna have to go back to their.
They can, they can be, they can be of assistance somehow, we, you know, but I, we don't mind paying them just to do it, because we're capable of doing.
Yes, so I would prefer we didn't sign anything, and I circle back to Carolyn because that phase one A states that they will be reconciling on, and the remaining mites to bring the township up to date. And we want them to do the one for the conversion, and we are capable of doing the reconciliations without incurring any additional costs of the township or the taxpayers that we work.
The only thing I'd say that might happen is if there are incorrect entries somehow, but from August, from that time, August forward, the clerk went back and did stuff, so we should be fine with our, with our transactions. Um, the problem that we're having right now is they entered stuff initially wrong, and it's like a lost something, so we have, they have to fix that, but I'm hoping it'd be as, every time I do something with them, it's a rabbit hole, but it'd be nice that they can be like, um, standby, but we don't want them to do reconciliations, we don't need to get them to that.
Okay, so I don't need to sign this addendum, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah.
And you guys, we're gonna go back and talk about their.
Yes, because we have to get that for her as a parent.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, she said she has.
Okay. All right, we're gonna pick it up a little bit here, we're down to the thirty minute, to stay on two hours, so I'm gonna try to speed things up here, we have a fire department report. Um, I believe Derek was gonna be here to enhance his request a little bit for the ATD that they were looking at. I would anticipate that we're probably gonna see us next month. Uh, he was gonna put together a little package to explain a little more of what it was he was looking for, so.
Emergency.
Yes, emergency ATD.
Now, he had emergencies, right?
Oh, gee.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. All right, well, uh, we can move on to the planning commission and Dan Packery. Um, he said he received a written form last week, and, um, that's all I have, unless you have any questions, and that's good, uh. I would just mention, um, and Dave kind of mentioned this earlier, uh, about some potential tweaks to the short-term rental ordinance, obviously, they'll all be out in the open for everyone to see, and we'll discuss a little bit, but, um. So at some point, when we get to the. So at some point, when we get to the discussion, we'll. Bring those up.
You had a note here to set a date to review that, is that something that the board wants?
Well, yeah. I put it on there and just kind of bring it on the radar, I mean, I don't know if we're ready to set that date yet, I've. You know, it might require more than one even, I don't know, but at this point, we have to start with. So is there any? Suggestions on potential dates for when maybe we have a special meeting to. Receive input from the public and possibly approve it to send it to the lawyer. I'm thinking probably not anymore this month. With the holiday net coming up, so. Our regular meeting is on December eighteenth. So. Uh December fourth is a Thursday would be an option, there's nothing in here.
What is the eleven?
Okay, uh December eleventh is a Thursday, there's nothing on the calendar then.
We also, are we gonna schedule a budget meeting too? Try to do it all in two months.
Why don't we hit this point with the situation that we're in with our books, I don't think we're.
We still have to approve a budget.
Draw a budget, because we're gonna have FGL numbers. Yeah, well, we can do the amendments, you're gonna be taking the class, so we can go back and do the amendments. At this one, we need GL numbers attached to where our spending is. Are you, when do you take the class?
I signed up for it a couple of weeks ago and I signed up for the DADnet. You know, the S and A dot net, and there was another separate one for the cloud, which is what we are, so. Uh there was a reschedule, but I have. What's his name, Abraham, sending me a. Happy of the the original webinar for.
Oh, perfect.
The other one, so I have that to view and then um. They schedule these things periodically because there's obviously new uptake all the time. But uh I'm not sure exactly about the date, there's nothing. Yeah. But getting back to the short term rental thing, are we ready to do that? Well, it hasn't been gone through quite a number of times, I'm thinking that. Yeah, as a board here, we at least need to, I would think, read it and we have to. Receive. You know, whatever kind of input the public wants to put out, I guess, I I don't know where it's gonna go. I think it could be a total disaster, we could be biting tooth and nail. Or it might be something that, you know. Yeah, it has to be officially. We can do the eleventh, uh there's. Other days, I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't have your.
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm deciding, Bob just brought up. Why don't we do this with our proposal to have a town hall meeting to talk about various things? In mid-January and have this included in that.
Short term rental is gonna be a meeting all to their tone.
Yeah, it's way too much.
Yeah, it'll probably be in the gymnasium and there'll be a lot of people there, so. We don't have a date set yet. We don't have a traditional newsletter.
I'm not doing the.
Okay, well, um all of yours here, um we're gonna either set a date or move on. Do we wanna try the five o'clock hour again, if we did? Five thirty, the eleventh of December. Okay, I'm making a motion that we set the date for uh public. Okay.
I think we just set the date.
All right. I'm all for it.
Statement of public what? Whether we're setting the date.
It's a, well, it is a public hearing to um receive. Public input. Yes, Dave, help me.
Right, um you you may wanna delay the public hearing until after it goes to the attorney. This meeting, you might consider making a big board to review it and pass it on to the attorney.
With no public input?
Well, you have a public comment on it, but, but, you know. A a public hearing is is an official act, you know. So you're gonna have one then and then you and then you would leave one, may want to wonder.
Yeah.
As you as you adopt it. Then probably the more appropriate place for it is that. Um after it comes from the back of the attorney.
Okay, so we'll set a date for the eleventh for a review of the board. And any potential. Modifications and we'll we'll hope to approve it to be sent to the legal team on the eleventh. How's that sound?
That sounds good. Are you gonna be in attendance or are you not?
Well, we could maybe change the date. Yeah, we'll have it on Zoom. Okay, well, we got that date set, but we need to move on because there's a backside with this agenda, so. Okay, um. Parks and Rec. Just a couple of quick things for me, we'll flick and I'll give you a couple of minutes to lay it on us and then we'll. Move on, it's pretty big, uh. Written report, it's actually a copy of the minutes, which is good, because that gives us everything. Uh but anyway, the first thing is that manual for the playground stuff, you can see it on there, I did get that ordered because on the way, I ordered the hard copy. Just so that we'll have it, you know, I mean, it could have, and it was the same amount of money for. Online digital copy at that, well, just don't do hard copy, so. It sounds well. I guess with that, I'll just give you the floor for a few minutes, if you've got some important topics, you'd like to let it out.
You talked about the border for the.
Yes.
Did that get approved in?
The mulch, but I don't think we have the border.
I don't think they had picked one out yet or and then I. Yep, yep, yep. Okay, all right, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, um. We asked for the update on the foundation, Heritage Foundation dissolvedment. Oh, we're wondering what's the recent most recent on that. Um, the grocery charities, I've been in contact with them. They have a capacity advised to refuel. And I'm working on a date with them. And that's a six hours of free consultation. And it would be with an expert in parks and recreation development. They would just give us suggestions, it would be up to us. As a board and committee to finalize the details, but it's six free hours. Uh it's under availability. Um we also, as the budget. Uh about the Parks and Rec New Master Plan. We have a potential, uh I know more details tomorrow, but I believe. Once we use up that other money for sure. We can move forward with a up to fifteen thousand dollar deed grant. For our Parks and Rec Master Plan. Separate than that other monies we have waiting for. Two different things, so. I suggest we move forward and get that devolved as fast as we can, so we can get some more funds. Work on our Parks and Rec. Uh Urban Master Plan, um T Travers Connect is very interested in being involved with us. And I'm working out details with them, um. Real quickly, uh we talked about restrooms, which you saw here, I'm working on a a plan with a holy tank. I'm getting some plans brought up from architect, but we have some, you guys have something official to look at. And the hot poles. We'd like to discuss that at some time. And then Jim just brought up some type of slumber that's free. That we can probably use in a tremendous amount of places in our township. And um. Yeah, yeah, and then. We we would like to set up a dance. Flat community forum. As soon as we can, January, February, whenever you guys feel free. And we can talk about the STRs, the new Park and Rec. Plan. The new hill road park proposal, community projects, subject new ordinance, the cemetery. Just early steps on visions, uh new strategies. Get the community involved, I think it's a great tool for us to try to utilize. To get the community in, like Dave said, utilize uh social media and our websites. And Parks and Rec are working on our uh. Social media and all that stuff, and we may be able to work with you guys and incorporate them all together. So that we could expand them all together and be more organized. As people want to look and see it. So that's, I got more of this.
Okay.
That's something I want to talk about.
Okay.
May seventh of twenty twenty four, Jericho City, that. Of a comment that they had eighteen their foundation. Still has eighteen months to complete their plans at the Veterans Memorial Park. And what you see is the results of. What they have done. Yeah, eighteen months, it's been eighteen months and one week, and I want a motion. To terminate legally terminate their lease. Um on the fall, on their behalf, they haven't been and done anything. And this is the last time that we've spoken, so.
I'll second that motion, and I think it's.
It's time to just get back to the P S and uh if a process of money hit us, it shouldn't terminate, it shouldn't.
Yeah, we have the. The name is uh Robert Parker, Parker Roberts.
And and they also uh. Mentioned the other day, if someone unforeseen that they really try to focus. They'll jump in more. Right, right, so. Thank you to W.
We're over commissioning.
Two thousand seven. Okay, I'm making a motion, or excuse me, Dave, Dave, or Bob made a motion to dissolve. The Patriot Park lease contractor, the Heritage Foundation's lease, yes, and I second. Okay, uh motion by Bob. Okay, I'll go ahead and take a roll call on this, but uh. Uh okay, um Bob Undero, yes. Uh Dave Cost.
Yeah.
Michelle Jackson.
Yes.
Christine Johnson.
Yes.
And Jim Letu, yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, um I will. Send a letter tomorrow uh. To Mr. Parker or Mr. Roberts and we'll get this done.
I was checking the old minutes of the Parks and Rec um. Report and looking at the border that we were talking about. And it it says that they talked about the hot poles, they talked about a wood border, um. Blue Star having edging, that was a possibility. They said she's sending out a poll.
Bob came up with a solution, I thought, and the same thing. That never got through on the report, Bob came up with a solution and I thought we voted.
A border?
The border that Bob came up with. That didn't make it.
We did not vote on, we voted on the mulch, we did not vote on the burger.
Well, you you. I I think what it was is. The actual border was not chosen by the Parks and Rec, so it would have been us spending money to buy the border.
Right, and Bob came up with that great nice border like over here, and I thought we were moving them to you guys to make a vote.
I think we all agreed that we liked it, but I don't, we did not vote on the level of.
It's not in.
If you guys don't want to go ahead and buy it, we can store that rubber. Put a tarp on it and just do it in the spring. If you don't want to incur some extra costs. Just throw that out as an option, it's gonna snow one of these days, nobody's gonna be playing out there.
Yeah, I I know you had the landscaping material down, um where did I put that down? That big wind came in.
How many times you can put it on since?
Chasing it throughout the park.
Yeah, I I'm hesitant to say that because I really wanted to get that up and running this body app and. Just not materializing. I mean, we may get some nice days and it may happen, but.
We all got purpose.
Yeah. So all right, let's just just move on then from the border right now until we figure out what what we're gonna do there. Okay, uh.
Sorry, one more thing, uh they did say in their um minutes. That they discussed who is gonna be responsible. For spreading that mulch. And it looks like we're putting that on maintenance, but that's a huge job for one person.
I agree, that's too.
That's way too much time and effort for our maintenance.
He what, he bales a couple thousand pounds, so it just have.
Yep, twenty two hundred pounds and there's ten bales.
They did large and there're gonna be more.
He can, but whoever he has, we can.
Yeah. A little plan probably on that.
Probably get a work fee together to do that.
That's what it would be.
No, no, it's it's um forty.
This little thing with the Florida Giants, they came to us, we were out there on Friday. Said that a lot of toilet paper and sanitizers are being stolen out of the. Radio Park East and Heritage Park. So he's gonna best efforts to try and lock everything up. Figure it in the work.
Wow.
And no more candidates. No more sanitation.
I think we should, uh. Security cameras up, uh, we're gonna add them up. Maybe just watch him.
Okay, uh, ma-. Maintenance, uh, I put just a couple notes on here. And I'm not sure who has the login information for the my deal thing, so. Either have to create a new one, or.
Might be in your email.
Yeah, it could be, I don't know if you put that, it is login information. Okay, so if I can't find the original login information, um, I have permission to create a new login and. Uh, I. E-yes, uh, I think I have the ability to spend a thousand or something about approval, but I don't know that. Ford new snow tires are gonna be under a thousand dollars, so it's a big charge, big pattern, so I have my advice. Yeah.
So I put E's on mine one time. From Quaker to El Dorado's. And they were the best, you know, tire you ever. And I used a lot of different tires. Yeah, they were nine hundred bucks. Quaker City, I guess.
Well, that's a deal. So everybody in the room knows they're very competitive on places. Local kid, his dad started that Quaker City up over, bought it from his dad. So, local love up there. He greets everybody pretty.
This M I deals thing is a special.
Yeah, yeah, we have to know that.
How much of a cut rate it is or nothing, but. I thought they used discount tire or bell tire or any of the other.
Oh, it's sort of, uh, big corporate.
But you go to M I deal and somehow they. Know where you're going to get tires and it's all set up at the. Um, more than like that, I have to create a new. New login info, so. So, I was thinking maybe making a quick little motion to authorize up to fifteen hundred dollars, just in case it is over that one thousand dollar mark. So I can still do it when I log in and we don't have to wait another month till meeting. So, I'm making a motion that we approve up to fifteen hundred dollars for. Uh, new snow tires for the plow truck.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll as a favor.
Yeah, bye.
Hi. Anybody else? No?
Up to how much?
Up to fifteen hundred, yeah, I, I. Honestly, I don't know, two hundred fifty dollars for a tire, mountain bells, they. You know, trucks, no tire. Probably right in that neighborhood, but.
I checked the Quaker side, too.
I wrote down. I'm only going with the M I deal thing at all.
I got Cooper ATs from Bell Tire and Rills. But just over two thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that was just to, so that I wouldn't have to. You know, not be able to order, and was the only reason I say, you know, it's probably not gonna be a thousand. All right, well, it looks like, uh, we have a motion, a second, and three people voted yes.
Three forty dollars, three?
But, uh, Dave did not vote. Go ahead, yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I guess it's unanimous. All right, moving on. Um, okay, is there anything else to make, and that's, I'm sorry, we didn't.
I did want to report that all three of Park East is sealed from the driveway. But Andrew helped me, in fact, my granddaughter is there helping us too, we put a new gate up. And the cedar fence that was missing is all better replaced.
Thank you.
Now I have to work on the hills, but there's a lot of trees in the strip.
Part of the, part of the pavilion, Heritage Park.
Yeah.
We're working on ice cream, ice cream. Um, got some holes in it, so we gotta patch up. I wrote the guy who got the reporter, the dump trailer.
I did.
Okay.
This was on just the rental, wasn't it?
Well, it's, it was whatever option to get from you, if you just wanna rent it, they also have the border. They had rentals that they sell. And then just buy a new one. Yeah. Pretty different ways of looking at. I just did two different versions, one was for. The pistons underneath, and those were. Not as good as the ones of the mountain pistons in the very front. Just they got more of the lift power.
My rated, when the boat trail, I think, piston underneath, traded a whole ninety two hundreds. About years of Michigan made. For twelve seventy.
So. My experience.
Okay, um, I'm looking at one here, the. Bay Road or ten thousand two hundred pounds. Trailer costs eleven thousand dollars. Okay, um. Yeah, something to think about, and maybe a couple more estimates, or.
It was like six hundred bucks.
Yep.
It was not like that.
Two twenty a day.
There you go, don't need your charters.
You know, I would, I would let. You guys. Save us a bunch of money.
Okay, um. Any other comments, I'm just, we got a little bit to get through here yet, so. Mister zoning administrator, Jeff, or John, go ahead.
You've got my original report, uh. We do have the new ticket books, and as Mr. Lube brought up. Uh, him and I are gonna get together at the end of this month, early this summer. To go around and check some of the, uh, major problems that we still have. That'll help streamline the process a little bit, I think, um, it'll, it'll step out of there, okay, to the point, out of the right citations. A lot of the people that have dealt with, again, I've got some compliance I had. And then I got a little bit, and then some involved banking and all habits. So I think that's gonna make a difference. Uh, since we brought up the, the bathroom issue. I am gonna suggest that you look into purchasing that the vent cam.
Yes.
Cellular camera, camera. Uh, it'll do that perfectly for what we're looking for, we already talked about maybe mounted on a pole out there. And it's hundred ninety nine dollars. Just, there's a couple different programs for fees, monthly fees. I recommend that there's a ten dollar fee, which is all inclusive a month, so it'll be additional hundred twenty bucks. I think it'll do exactly what we need to do with cellular, you know, Wi-Fi. It will do what we need to do, and it's mobile, too.
Yep, uh, I'll get with it tomorrow, I'm if you want.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, uh, public safety did not meet, so road committee.
Yeah, um, we got a new, uh, pay the rating though.
Pay share.
Um. Uh, we've been discussing our meeting, we had some public come to us about possibly adding three crosswalks to Crystal Beach Road. Um, so representing that. Guys to decide if we can. Maybe get that done, um, it was for Lake Street Axon. Uh, Birch and Cedar. Um, this, where we got stuck on both sides of the road. And I don't know if that can pull out of the metro fund, pay for it, or what. That was our schedule, I think. Um, we're, you know, pro- problems with parking, especially in our way trail and the boat launch. Um, I don't know if you guys can look into doing more of an ordinance for no parking, um. Something included with towing. Um, I know I talked to some officers saying they. Post tickets on card, but they just sit there, they already got the ticket, so.
Exactly, paying for parking.
Yeah, so. My suggestion is maybe supplement the ordinance of where we can put towing signs and they just tow away.
Can I throw a little input on that? The parking that we have problems with on our way trail. Is the boat running. So, the boat. Runners need to have a shuttle so they can be parked, because they're doing cameras at. The D N, D N R launch. Their launch is designed for. Trucks and cars with trailers. So this is something you need to take in for the D N R and the sheriffs department.
Absolutely.
And. I don't know if there's any licensing involved in the boat running companies, but something has to, because that's, that's who they are. Where parts are on the road, we have different. I draw them all, which on the shelves here, it really changes me.
I know a lot of it was, you know, we got. On Crystal Beach Road from Arwood down to the bridge. Obviously, lakeside, there's no parking, and then both sides, when you get past Lake Street Axon, our fault was the same thing. On Arwood. You know, lengthens the one side. Stuff like that.
Real quick to add to that. Uh, the new citations that we have also have a place for parking. That's true, party tickets.
So. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know how that works, we gotta figure that out. So these are approximate prices on these projects here, and you want me to get a. Estimates and actual numbers.
Yeah.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. That's twenty twenty six, uh, road and project bid, uh, we gotta have something turned in to. I think it's by mark to the road commission, so we can get. Cost valued. Um, for the twenty twenty six road project.
Yep. You can submit it anytime, but by March.
By March, yes. Requested, um. So our proposal for Ben to take to the road commission is. Um, tar and chips for all our village streets that we have here in town. Um, that's roughly with twenty twenty five prices, is how we came up with this. Is roughly seventy K to do that. Um.
When you say all the village streets, you mean?
So it'll be, um. River Street, First Street, Center Street, Water Street. Um, the west, west main garden field, there's Harrison, uh, South Street. Uh, Church Street and Almond Street, I mean, that, that's all of them. So, I don't think there are any more than. I think it was before that Dan, like, bust a mile or. One mile.
Down here?
Yeah, one mile, I think, mile or eight.
And some of them are getting pretty bad shape, I know, they have a little alligator looking skin all over on her.
Especially here, or the school, or the school office.
Okay, I'll get those submitted. I, I did, uh, one other thing I'm here, um, and this kind of relates to the RV campground, and that is that, uh. Road commission has asked for a, they're requesting a traffic impact study. To be done on the hill and Rapid City Road intersection area. Um. I'm told that, uh, generally the applicants pay for that and. That they apply to the road commission and the road commission will get them started on it.
I, I emailed the applicant today. Got the contact and the recognition.
Okay, and anything else on roads? Yeah.
There's more, yes, but.
There is.
Why call the, try, I called him. Okay.
Yeah, I talked to him, he said just have you reach out, go and.
Okay, move on. Move on to supervisor correspondence, uh, the data center, I kinda already filled you in on that, I guess we don't even need to discuss it, self power. Request for township property, it was, I wasn't sure if he was gonna show up or not, so I put it on here just to bring it out if it didn't happen then, so. Um. And then, then, what Dave has been talking about there, I kinda have a similar idea, uh, I was. Thinking we have so many, you know, important issues going on right now, that maybe we just need to engage the public a little more. This would be one way to do it, so I'm looking forward to doing some of those things we've been talking about there, so. Also, uh, item D. Uh, in supervisor com- or thing there, I was gonna have Andrew to go ahead and lock in the date, Jeff, how you have contacts over there and stuff. Um, I. I'm not sure if we would have money to do it twice. In the same year, so at least get the one secured and. Um.
Go ahead and stay with the same one as scrap metal then do.
Yeah, that was a pretty even swap, I, I think we got ripped off a little bit, um.
Let's, let's talk to Beacon recently, from Jeff, I have all those contacts, I'll get.
There you go.
Super honest, yeah.
Just very, very quickly, we got a, a roll-off dumpster for two hundred fifty bucks, and we use it exclusively for scrap metal. They're in the collection, and we got all but twelve lots back or something.
I think we have to pay.
Pay like twelve bucks.
That don't make any sense.
But that did keep our truck count a little lower, because we didn't have all the scrap metal going in the truck, so. There's probably. Yep, you know somebody else? Okay, um. Old business. Uh, budget observations, I don't know if we had to move any funds today or not, it's, um. Not really the end of the quarter or anything like that, but I don't know where we remove funds to or out of. All right, um, sheriff's contract, uh, I feel like at least need to mention it.
The one thing that we did need to discuss is the ARPA, we're gonna get to the GL members where the funds were paid that held up. For, but we need those. So that is also something.
Yes, I will, I will, uh, dig back into that ARPA fund. Um, thing and. Yes, and dig up those, uh. Yep. Um, sheriff's contract, I was just mentioning, I feel I just need to mention it at every meeting, that we don't have a sheriff's contract, so.
We are here, though.
Yeah. Yep, and that's okay, too.
See you.
Yep. So, anyway, um, Hospital five oh one C three. Uh, with the shutdown, the IRS closed for a little while, so they're back and forth during the conversion. Slowed for a little bit, but I talked to Andrew, uh, Raymond, the C E O of. The hospital yesterday. And. He said he anticipated three to six months, we would be looking at the conversion page in place. So, just a little update there, um. I need a copy of the cemetery ordinance that I can edit, is that something that you can send me, or Christopher can send me?
See it too, so I'm tired of picking up after everybody.
Um, I'll, I'll send you one a hand.
Okay, because, I mean, I could redo it, we just wanted to make a couple little corrections. Okay, appreciate that. Um, septic ordinance. Uh, I attempted to get a hold of Lee Bus, so we're gonna have him do, um. Kind of a. The Q and A with us or something, another thing I also would like to do is I'd like to generate a map that would show us just where in the township that. Five hundred feet line would include, I'm told that the G I S can do that. Uh, but I just wanna see, I mean, if it, it's all but one little area of the township. Maybe we might mount a way to make it for the entire township, okay, so. Just a, a thought, I would like to see what areas included in.
I'd like to season it too, yeah.
All right, new business.
Um, then just briefly, I'm gonna speak with Lee Bus on Monday morning.
Okay, good. Ask him if he has some dates available that would.
I know he lives in Traverse City, he may not wanna come out here in the evening.
He can be on Zoom too. All right, uh just kept this on the agenda because we need to discuss it periodically and find out where we're at, and that is with the. Memorial recognition for Rick Young. And I see Dave has his hand up her finger up.
I've been talking to Rick, I excuse me, Kevin and his family, there's a stepmom. And over the last few months and I have a few ideas and seeing it would probably be through Rock Parks and Rec. Okay, of a location for something, I would uh entertain working with them and the board. Maybe get some recommendations for you guys to look at.
I I have a idea that kinda popped through my head there real quick, and that is. What you you've probably seen Mike Anderson's. Well, he has it, well, there's one over there too, but at the cemetery he has a gray stone too, and it's more or less a rock that's been sliced in and. Move spot, there's a a thing. You know, that maybe something that.
I would say yes, that we incorporate that into something over major, because I'll be honest with you. Yeah, I I they are so kind to us, I don't even have to talk to Kevin anymore, I just go over there and order things.
Wild idea, we have a few parks. Anybody ever consider the names of the parks have any current meaning to anybody and. If maybe it would be more meaningful to honor the family by commemorating a part or the meaning of the part.
I agree with that, there's two of them, there's a park just before on the bridge, and then if we do anything in the future with fireman's park. We could have a fireman's memorial there, cut a rock or two, and then we could have a. Uh Rick Young garden, we could put a very nice garden there. And it would draw people and they would love it and. I have uh somebody that will cut those trees down. So. You know, I mean, uh. We can get water from the fire department.
Told their poison the trees. All right, well, I'll I'll go ahead and table this Rick Young thing, we obviously have some discussion and plan more to do on that, so just keep it on the radar. And also, um. As far as. Street light, I left that on there too, because we have some ongoing issues, we have. Occasionally, the this eye that detects light or darkness. That will fail on us, and then we also have some type of a breaker situation where a breaker. So anyway, I'm I'm gonna keep pushing on that and. We're gonna. Have to get, uh what's his name, Brandon.
It's weird, as well as the lights, all that all lets the work, cause all the person places, the reason starts.
Yeah.
Different light, I don't know what's.
It is very strange.
I took a bomb down under the barn, the same ones that are used, and I'll make try, if we slice one in, yeah. See if that helps or.
We need to order some more of those lights anyway, because I have a couple in the gym, which.
They range from a hundred to eighty nine bucks.
They really suck at us on light bulbs.
Looking at one of those lights and he was getting ready to take one apart to change a part out. I wanna say it was Morrison Electric, happened to drive by and saw him and said, what are you doing? If you touch that, it voids any warranty, and you cannot get that light repaired, you have to replace the whole thing. I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, moving on now, budget, budget preparation, obviously, we can't really do anything with that right now, but I have one other little thing that I just wanted to mention this. So that everybody knows, and it's like all on the same page. Um we have a situation where one of our ceiling fans over in the gym got, uh had a. Volleyball stuck on top of the cage or something, and they threw a couple balls up there to get it down. And one of the chains broke on the cage, so it's tipped to the side, so I have to rent. Something to get up to the ceiling, so I wanna have some spare light bulbs, because I think there's. Potentially two of them, they have some of the panels out on, so I wanna change that. And looking into and pricing all this stuff, I came up with an idea of getting. A three stack of rolling scaffolding.
I knew you would.
And and it's cheaper to rent by the week, so I'm thinking, okay, well now maybe we don't like, hey. We might, you know, redo some other areas that we need something hype, but anyways, for less money than renting a lift for a half day. Or a day, I can rent a scaffold for a week that'll get us up there, so. We need to plan a couple projects, I know Haley, the. Uh young lady that does the gymnastics, she wants to put one of those ribbon things up there on one of the steel trusses, so. Yeah, for swinging and then possibly a rope or something like that too, so. I measured to the peak, it's like twenty four feet.
We did a container.
I know where it was.
You mean water boards for the. Sounds good, um I don't think we need a closed session. Any, oh, yeah, we have to add the 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 invoice for the. Excavation and replanting of land, uh that was used for the easement on Underhill Road, the bill is twenty one. Hundred and fifty dollars, I'm making motion, this will close out the Underhill Road project, this will be the last expense. Uh I make motion to pay the Underhill twenty five, point one hundred and fifty dollars. Uh would be the road fund. Is there a second? I'll do a roll call, it's two thousand dollars, yeah. Um Dave Cost. It's my understanding, okay, of.
It's written very good, right, okay.
If you say you have a conflict of interest, okay, I I have a conflict because I own that property. Then you're disclosing it, so you can go, so people will know, but you've disclosed that you have an issue. Right, we don't need to go. Okay, so um Jim left you, yes. All right, that motion carries, and with that, we won't need a closed session. Any closing board member comments before I throw it out to public?
The only thing that I just wanted to circle that.
Get that for you.
So we need. And then the only other comment that I wanted to make, um general board feeling is just, um thank you to Lauren Berthelot. For the raffle and the charitable five hundred dollars to donate to, um.
Okay, um any other board comments before I throw out there the last public comment?
My comment would be a huge appreciation to the community for the overwhelming support, not just Warren, but people all. Over the community donated to the pantry when the SNAP benefits got paused. To make sure that people have food, I just, I was overwhelmed by the support that came in, even Alden Methodist church doing a spaghetti dinner for us and. Altogether, we raised enough money to cover our Thanksgiving meal giveaway, which is coming up this Friday, tomorrow. And then, um. Towards our budget for the next year, so it's just a beautiful, beautiful thing, and uh. Speaking of village market, they donated thirty turkeys for our Thanksgiving box giveaway, so just so, so grateful for, yes. Yes, when I saw all the support coming in just from all over the place, I'm just like, this is where you wanna live. This is the kind of community you wanna live in, yeah, it's beautiful.
Okay, any public comment before we get out of here?
I just wanna make a suggestion, if you're talking about being um conspired soon, and then Crystal Beach, and the Milton side of. The bridge, they put those crosswalks in with the new D N R boat launch right there by the hardware. And nobody pays attention to them. I mean, I've been hit almost three times this summer walking my dog down there, the guys at the hardware are like, oh yeah, we see these clowns go blowing by here all the time. Almost hitting kids that are walking across to, you know, get from the boat launch over where either car was parked. So if you're, if you're gonna do that, and and you're gonna try really hard to get compliance, you know, the sign, it's a little. Here.
Been road tested.
If we do it, we're gonna do it with flashing lights. Push button activated, so.
Even that, yeah, I mean, it was crazy some.
Let's put together a package for that and get like a final boss to do all I met upon. Any other public comment?
One thing, the planning commission, uh at their next meeting, we'll be setting our meeting dates for. Um next year, and I know there's been a little rumbling around about changing the meeting time possibly. Possibly to six P M instead of seven, and I think if. We shouldn't do that if the board doesn't do that, so I think that's something that should be discussed between the board and. Planning commission, possibly if they wanna change the meeting times back to to six P M.
I would like to see a universal time for all of our public. Just something to discuss and think about me. Okay, good idea, thank you.
So at our, um at our cemetery, she had, it was mentioned that, um certain board members had. Duties that were assigned to them previously, and you didn't look back and see where that was, but it was declared like, I'm not doing those duties or whatever, I just wanna bring up. Additional duties assignable by the board, um it's Michigan, under Michigan law, M C L forty one point nine six. Legal authority, the township board has a statutory authority to assign additional non-statutory duties to any elected township officer. Determine whether extra compensation is provided for those duties or not, they don't have to be paid for those. These duties remain assigned until the board formally re-assigns or removes them. Not a board member can't say, I'm not doing that, they, that's not allowed.
Yes, like M M T A says that you cannot.
This is my public comment, thank you. Um the additional duties could be uh assigned, tasks, duties are tasks not required by Michigan statute for the clerk. The officers, these duties may be assigned by township ordinance, board resolution, board direction or historical practice re uh reaffirmed by the board. And they are acting against the compensation rules, extra pay for additional duties is authorized only by the board. Compensation is not automatic and cannot be self-determined by anybody on the board. The board may choose no additional compensation, additional salary, a stipend, hourly compensation, or per task compensation. So, um. I just, you know, I just wanna point that out, that is M C L, what did I say, forty one point. Yeah, so it is a straight from Michigan statute, yeah, yeah, you you can appoint somebody on the board to do that, but they have to agree.
No, yeah, no, they don't.
M T A just said in the training, I was, they they just said, uh also, um. I I mentioned to them that there was resolution with, uh. Apparently, I've not seen this resolution, but a resolution where the clerk was assigning those duties, and they said that. That resolution would only apply to that clerk, it does not roll over to.
It's not a.
And it's assigned by ordinance, so that or until that ordinance has been changed, the vote, the board votes on it again or reassigned at this stage and.
Where is that ordinance?
It's, it was on the ordinance that you guys read, it's the clerk.
There was an old ordinance and there was a new ordinance, or new. But in the old ordinance, it specifically had the court, he was there. So, um with, I I just wanna say, and I respect M T A, um. But state laws and then federal laws and then. There is a um chain within that, but, um.
And I appreciate that, but I would take it to legal because I'm, I have enough on my plate and I cannot handle cemetery.
Okay, any other comment? I'm sorry, Andrew.
I was gonna say, if you need help on the website.
Dave, the cell tower situation is fascinating, uh fifty to ninety nine year lease. Makes me wonder if the community and board seriously considering, uh if there's someone out there that can consult. On our behalf and tell us what is really worth and what the liabilities are. I mean, what's one thought that came to my mind was, in fifty years, when cell towers are antiquated and. They go chapter seven, like Sears and Montgomery Ward and everybody else. Who's gonna take that tower to home and how much does that cost in fifty years? But what if it starts falling apart, and I mean, is, do we own that problem? What does that cost?
I mean, I own for twenty five cents per call goes through.
Yeah, I mean, that, how do we know that's not worth a million dollars, five million?
But what if, if it's planted there, though, what if we wanna add on, there's no way.
I don't think that a board can saddle. A future board more than twenty years into the future, I I can't remember where I read that exactly, but I think that is. True, okay, which the Heritage Foundation contracts for that twenty five year lease, that would be an example of a perfect thing right there where you can't. You know, make a future board. Be complied fifty years down the road.
Well, then another thing would be, you know, what if the future value of money is so significant that they're they're releasing that to. Who later, what if we wanna renegotiate in ten, twenty years and say, oh, no, that's it, that's a lot more, no.
Well, we're a long way from saying yes on that, and to be quite honest, I just like that location.
Right, it's the middle of the community, yes?
But I thought, you know, that, I mean, and he's actually suggested he would be interested in looking at other areas in the township.
There there's other entities that will actually work for A T and T and these places, and no, yeah, they'll they'll call and. Do all that.